Purposes meeting is to conduct the business of the Gethysburg Area School District. Public comment is welcome. In cases we refer to the appropriate board committee or administrator. Comments will be summarized in the official board minutes, which will be available by contacting the business office. Please take a moment to silence your cell phones and your other electronic devices. Jane, everybody's here. Carrie Soliday is on a work assignment, traveling back from the other side of the state. Unfortunately, because of her travel, she will not make today's meeting, nor could she participate via the phone based upon the length of the process. She's here by excuse. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome. First part of our official meeting will be the vacancy candidate interviews. Thank you for all taking the field, all of you for taking the time to apply for the open seat on the Gethysburg Area School Board of Education. The interview process is straightforward. After a short introduction, each member of the board will ask you a question. You may make a short closing comment. Following your interview, you are welcome to stay in the boardroom. We do ask that once your interview is concluded that you refrain from any additional comment. At the completion of the interview process, the floor will be opened by me for nominations. If a clear majority of the board selects an applicant to fill a vacant seat, it is the board's intention that the applicants sworn in tonight and join the board for the remainder of the meeting. Are there any questions for the applicants? Interviews will begin in a few minutes. However, first, to provide a random order, you will draw a number from a box. The applicant drawing one will be the first, two will be the second, and three will be the third, and so on. The first applicant may stay in the boardroom if they choose to while the other interviews are being conducted. The rest of you will leave the boardroom until you're called. In closing, the board will only consider the interview questions that were asked this evening and no other outside source or documents. Are there any questions? I believe Mr. Hunt is going around drawing numbers now. Once the numbers are drawn, we're going to ask you to step outside to the foyer area in the administrative office, and number one can come back in. Well, who is number one? Number one, you're welcome to stay. If the other three applicants could please fall out of the foyer area, and we will call you as your number is drawn or picked. You may step forward and introduce yourself and give a brief overview, and then when you're completed, we'll start the actual questions from the board members.
My name is Michelle Myers. I am a resident of Gethysburg, obviously. I've lived here all my life. My parents went to the school, I lived at the school. I have children who have graduated from the school and are currently involved in the What happens here is pretty important.
Thank you. Very first question. Do you feel public school tax dollars should be pledged to fund economic development?
I think I need you to define economic development. I'm talking... I see economic development two ways. So there's economic development as in our students are going to be going forward, and we're going to hope that they're going to be successful and do really good and economically move the country forward. Or are you talking... There's also economic development where is... I know that there's been some talk with the district and Main Street and the Gethysburg about some of the parking spaces that I don't feel would be appropriate.
And I apologize. I don't believe without... I'm going to have to defer. Am I able to add to the question as long as all the other candidates have the exact same question?
Yeah, sure, as long as you give the same.
For clarification on my question, the economic development is using taxpayer dollars for economic development?
Again, I think if it... I don't want the district out purchasing property that's not going to benefit the students here. Like, I know that we purchased property, or we have in the past, that we have turned around and the buildings and trades classes have used to build their homes. That I'm all favor for because I think we should be supporting buildings and trades. But as far as anything other than that, off the top of my head, like on the spot, no, I can't think of.
Thank you.
Hello, Michelle. Thank you for your interest in the school board. I have a question for you. What do you believe is the largest challenge facing our district, and why do you feel you are qualified to help us solve that challenge?
I think the biggest challenge in this district is taking the limited amount of resources that we have and putting them to use for the students today so that they can make a better tomorrow. And I don't know that I can fix any of that. I think that's more of a management. I think we have to manage those dollars. And I think there's always something else that's going to come up that's going to want to piece enough high. All right, thank you.
Tim.
Thank you for coming. Mine's a simple question. In 10 seconds, describe yourself as a one-word adjective.
determined.
Ow!
Michelle, if appointed, sometimes we get questioned by people in the community. For me, it typically happens at the grocery store, at church, who knows, anywhere in the community, or you might even take a phone call. And someone has a personal issue with either someone or some program here within the district. How might you handle that? How might you respond to that person and that taxpayer in the district?
I think the first thing I would do would be thank them for entrusting me enough to come to me. But I think the next thing I would advise them is that if it's a problem with a teacher or principal or something like that... If it's a teacher, I think you need to follow the chain of command and talk to your principal first. If it's with the principal, then maybe you make an appointment and talk to Dr. Parent. If it's something that you don't like, the school board annoying, then you need to come and address it. It's not just me that makes decisions. There's my people here, and I think my people need to be able to hear it and make decisions about it, whatever the problem might be.
Thank you. Amy Beth.
Hi, Michelle. Good evening. Thank you for coming out. My question for you tonight is, do you have a personal mission statement? And if so, what would that be?
I don't really have a mission statement, per se, but... All of my life... I'm sorry, I get a little choked up. Mr. Rogers always said, "When things go bad, look for your helpers." And all of my life, I've been raised around helpers. I grew up around the firemen's. I grew up around police officers. My father was a deputy game warden for 26 years. I'm married to a police officer. It's just normal for me. It's like the next step for me to step up and help. When I became a mother, I thought about like how... I want my kids to leave things better than they found them. So I encourage them, I engage them, I try to equip them to do the same thing, to step up. And when an opportunity opens up, go for it.
Thank you very much.
Michelle, thanks for coming out tonight. Describe what you think the number-one challenge facing public education is today, and if appointed, what approach would you take to address it?
I think it's the same answer that I gave Ms. Pratt. Essentially, trying to come up with figuring out your limited resources here and how to spread those limited resources amongst your students of today for better tomorrow. And again, I don't know that you can fix it. I think we need to manage it.
Thank you. Tim.
Michelle, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. My question for you is, I want to know what your strengths are, and how do you think that they would help you on the school board?
Strengths? Well, I graduated from here. I have five children. I have put... Three of them have graduated from here already, one is still enrolled here. One, I actually pulled away from here and enrolled at Mount Hershey. With that said, I've had... I also have a grandchild that will be starting at Franklin Township this fall. So with that said, I think I have a pretty... Kind of a bird's-eye view of what's going on around here through my children, obviously. Yep. I do read board minutes, reading minutes, if that's important. But I also work at Upper Adams School District and the facilities department. We are a subcontractor. But working there, I see a lot more of the ins and outs of how things work. I don't think a lot of people understand what like Dr. Parent's job entails. I don't think a lot of people understand what the principal's job entails. And sometimes, until you're sitting there, even if it's just on this side of the window watching, which I've been able to do, you get a better idea of what goes on. And people just don't sit at a desk and twiddle their thumbs all day. That's not how it works. So between having the bird's-eye view of what goes on here through my children, reading minutes, keeping up to date with what goes on here, and then having the view that I think I'm lucky to have at Upper Adams, I think that would be a good strength.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. That concludes the interview portion. As you're more than welcome to stay for the remaining candidate interviews, at which point, we'll follow through with the rest of our process. Thanks again.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I am sorry. I didn't make a mistake, and I apologize. You do have an opportunity to have a closing statement if you'd like to... Anything else you would like to tell the board?
Nothing off the top of my head. I'm kind of done with the hot seat, honestly.
I apologize, and thank you so much for participating. Welcome, Mr. Hershey.
Thank you.
We're going to provide you a little bit of opportunity and time here to give us an opening statement if you wish before we start the questions, and afterwards, we'll give you, again, a closing statement to wrap up anything you might want to address prior to the next candidate interview.
Sure.
You may begin.
Okay. I guess probably... I apologize for my sore throat. I guess I can start by saying, when friends of mine heard that I was running for the open seat, their comments in most part were, "Hershey, you're crazy. Why would you want to take that abuse to be a school board member?" And I said, "Remember, I just had one year of experience being a board member, and I loved it. So here I am, back looking to see if I can acquire that seat. I think I have the educational background necessary to continue if I'm given that opportunity to be a successful board member. I've got that experience at elementary and middle and high school in my last eight years as superintendent. Someone else called me after the article appeared in the paper a couple weeks ago and identified himself, and of course, his topic was taxes. And are you going to make sure you keep your taxes low, Hershey?" And I said, "Well, I guess the best thing I can say to you is that my last four years of being a superintendent in a pre-K-12 district in New Jersey, we raised the taxes 1.8% total for four years. So it is possible, without hurting students. There are ways of taking a look at it, and I think this board did an excellent job making sure that we were very fair in coming up with that amount of increase, which was zero this year, so awesome. So here I am. Shoot your questions at me."
Thank you, thank you. Do you feel public school dollars should be pledged to fund economic development? For clarification, that's using taxpayer money for economic development?
It depends on needs. We live in a society where we need to take care of certain aspects of education, certain needs of education, and tax dollars is our main way of gaining revenue. So economically speaking, the short answer would be yes, and obviously, the board needs to take a look at that carefully and see exactly what the right answer is and move forward from there.
Thank you. Kathleen.
Sylvan, nice to see you.
Thank you, nice to see you.
What do you believe is the largest challenge facing our districts, and why do you feel you are qualified to help us with that challenge?
Well, having had the opportunity to take a look at five-year plans that the district has put together, and going from year one to five, and in many cases, we're at different levels of those five-year plans, I think we need to make sure that those items, those initiatives that the board five years ago, if we're in the last year of it, felt was important, and also the same thing trickling down to year one, making sure that if we have the funding, and obviously, when you take a look at a five-year plan, the funding is the biggest aspect of it, and making sure that the budget takes care of those plans, those budgeted items. I think we can move forward in building projects, the curriculum projects, the transportation projects, those things that need replaced because they run out and expired in the amount of years that they are functional. So a long answer, but I think that's the way we need to look at it.
All right, thank you.
Tim.
How are you, Mr. Hershey?
Just fine, thank you, except for the sore throat.
In 10 seconds or less, describe yourself in a one-word adjective.
Well, I think...
One word.
The one word would be cooperative.
Thank you. Good evening, Sylvan. Sometimes, Sylvan, as a school board member, as you well know, you get approached in the community... For me, it happens in the grocery store or church, or I get a phone call, or talking to a neighbor that has an issue with the district, whether it be personnel, a coach, or some program, and so on. How would you handle that situation if you got that concern communicated to you?
Well, I think as a board member, the best way to handle anything like that is you allow the person to talk with you, to chat with you. You listen, and then the last thing you want to let them with, the last idea you want to leave with them is, you're one member of the nine-member board, and you're not making any decisions in a conversation at Giant or wherever it may be, on the sidewalk, and probably say, "Come into a board meeting some Monday night and share that with the board, and we'll come up with an answer for you."
Thank you. Amy Beth.
Very nice to see you tonight. How are you?
I'm just fine.
Great. My question to you is, do you have a personal mission statement? And if you do, what would that be?
Well, I think, having been in education all the years that I have been, my mission statement would be, "Do what's always in the best interest of students." That has to be qualified in, again, funding. I was part of the board when we had parents come in here thinking we needed to add another sport to our athletic offerings. We listened to them, we researched it, and then we came up as a board that that's a good idea. A music teacher at the middle school, you listen, you find out what the story is, you listen to your administrators, and then you do what you believe to be best. In that case, again, the board decided that that was best. But we obviously can't say yes to everything, so we have to evaluate them and research them.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Michael. Mr. Hershey, thank you for coming out. Describe what you think the number-one challenge facing public education is, and if appointed, what approach would you take to address it?
Well, I think in this day and age, the overall umbrella problem is communications. I meet a lot of people who complain because the times table isn't taught at the elementary school anymore, or civil war isn't taught. You need to make sure that people know what are going on, what's going on. I know all of our buildings have open houses, they have conferences with teachers. The more we can do, and we've got a good local newspaper here that is very willing to put things in there, but there are lots of things that fall under there, but I think that's the biggest concern in this day and age, where there's always a media blitz on about something other than education usually.
Thank you very much.
Beth. Tim.
Good evening, Mr. Hershey. What are your strengths, and how do you think that would contribute to you on the school board?
Well, I've always looked at myself as somebody who is a better listener than I am a speaker, and I think that's the key to your success, because if somebody comes into you and shares a problem or shares an idea, and they leave thinking you didn't pay any attention to them, or you had your mind made up before they came in, I think that's the strongest attribute that I have. I think also that I'm willing to compromise. I have lots of ideas, but the ideas will never be successful if the people who want to buy into it don't get what I'm thinking and what they're thinking to come together with something planned that will work. So that's just a couple ideas I have, a couple strengths I have, and I think...
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hershey. In closing, if you have anything else you'd like to share with the board?
I don't really have too much to say, other than I guess my fate is in your hands, so I would ask that you give me serious consideration, and I will trust whatever your decision is.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Yidda. How are you? Hi. How's everybody doing in this evening?
Good. Welcome. We're going to allow you a brief opportunity here to do an opening statement. Anything you'd like to tell the board prior to starting the questions?
I believe that we have four things that I would like to address if I am so elected to serve on the board. One, career in technology is an important aspect to my candidacy for the position. There's... We have so many students that are... Don't know what they would like to do when they're in high school, and then they go into college, and they dabble around and are not for sure what they'd like to achieve or what career choice they're going. I feel if we... I know we have a career in technology program here at Gethysburg, but I feel that we still need to look at aspects where we can and continue to support those choices. I've grown up in career in technology my whole life, and I have been blessed with a vast wealth of knowledge that's helped me in my current job and in my college career. Right now, we are... I'm working with the Gethysburg Horticulture Program with Jenna Timmons. She has also wrote a letter of recommendation.
The only thing that we will consider this evening are your opening statement to questions and the closing statement. I apologize because we didn't afford the other candidates an opportunity for letters or any other types of documents.
Okay, not a problem. That's not a problem.
Thank you, Beth.
Okay. Secondly, I feel that we need to also have teachers and administrators that support students in their goal to achieve whatever desire or career choice they'd like to achieve. I've had a personal experience where I've had a vice principal tell me that I could not make a career in agriculture. And my mom always taught me to have thick skin, and I used that as motivation. And I feel that we need to have teachers and administrators support our students, build them up rather than tear them down. Going back to career in technology, anybody know Mike Rowe, the guy from Dirty Jobs? He also has a foundation now where he goes around stressing the importance of career in technology. Right now, there's 44 million students that graduate college that have student debt that equals $1.5 trillion. Student debt is the second-most consumer debt in the United States. Wouldn't it be good and a blessing for our students if we could develop and have them find a career path that they like and help them achieve their goal in that? Secondly, right now, 50% of the Gethysburg Area Schools or students that graduate goes to a four-year college. This came from a Littlestown teacher that was at the Doug Mastroiano Town Hall meeting this past Thursday. I feel that I could be a voice for these students, that if we could have them come to find a career choice through career in technology, that they could find their passion and then not waste the money out of college, or feel, oh, well, it's... Feel that I can't follow the choice that I would want to. So I want to push that. Thirdly, family environment, family involvement in the school system. Franklin Township, I have a student that goes to Franklin Township, that they do a great job at promoting family involvement and with like the Halloween events, Christmas events. I would like to stress family importance, that it starts at home, having a healthy school environment, and I feel that we need to look at this and see if there's any areas where we can improve on family involvement. And fourthly, safety. Has anybody heard of the website niche.com? If not, it's a website where you can locate and look up communities, schools, or other aspects that to relocate if you're trying to move and see what is the best area or school or community or college that you would like to achieve. I hopped in Gethysburg School District, and we ranked pretty good in reading and writing. Writing was 79%, reading was 59%. But one statistic stood out to me. In safety, out of 500 school districts, we ranked 251st. I'm going to say this again. Out of 500, we ranked 251st. That is unacceptable, not as a candidate, but as a parent. I feel that we need to look at areas that we may be weak in safety. How can we address them and try to improve that aspect? And also that I know that there's only one school resource officer for five schools. I feel that we need to address that and try to add at least one person, if not more. Now, I don't know what the budget is. If I'm so elected, you know, I like to work with everybody on the board and see where we can make cuts and see if we can add someone to help achieve that goal of mine. Again, career in technology, have administrators and teachers support our students. Thirdly, family involvement, and finally, safety is my top priorities. At this time, I'd like to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do you feel public school tax dollars should be pledged to fund economic development? Do you feel public school tax dollars should be pledged to fund economic development? For clarification, it would be using taxpayer dollars for economic development?
Economic development. Well, we're investing in the future leaders of the community, whether whatever career choice that they're going to be going into. So technically, we are investing in economic development because we're developing the future leaders of their career choice, and I feel that we are developing that.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Alex, thank you for your interest in the school board.
Thank you.
What do you believe is the largest challenge facing our district, and why do you feel you are qualified to help us solve that challenge?
Okay, I appreciate that question. The biggest thing facing this school district right now is the property-slash-school tax. I watched by Facebook the Doug Mastriano Town Hall, as I stated previously, that there are a lot of people that for the past...that stated the past 15 years that the tax dollar has continued to rise, but yet our test scores do not reflect the investment that we are doing. I feel as a community that we need to work together. Now, it's not me, I can't do that, but I know that there are current board members that is working with our local state leaders, Douglas Mastriano, and trying to come up with a solution to this. It's not just me. We have to work as a team to come up with solutions to solve this problem.
Thank you.
Kim?
In 10 seconds, describe yourself in a one-word adjective.
Caring. I've cared, I've cared about students.
One word. That was nice. Thank you.
Good evening, Alex. Alex, if appointed, how would you handle a request if approached by an individual member of the community? For me, sometimes it happens at the grocery store, at church, a neighbor, a phone call, who has an issue, whether it be a program, a person here within the district that they have an issue with. What...how would you handle that? What would you advise them to do?
I would...what I would tell them is that I would bring it to the board, and we would look, you know, bring it to the board, and we would all talk about it, look at the pros and cons of the situation at hand, that I cannot promise anything, that my interest is for the students and the families of Gettysburg Area School District, not my own interest or that person. But if they do have a problem, I would bring it in front of everybody here, and we would attach it together as a group.
Thank you.
Amy Beth?
Thank you for coming out tonight. Do you have a personal mission statement, and if so, what would that be?
Personal mission statement? First off, I wouldn't have anything that I have right now without the board above. Personal mission statement: to equip, engage, and encourage others to believe in and achieve their dreams. That we all have dreams, we strive to be better, but we have to have faith, first off, in the board above, faith in ourselves, and sometimes we're gonna hit bumps in the road, but we have to dig down deep and encourage ourselves and push through the hard times. And if we believe in ourselves and lean on each other, we can get across anything.
Thank you.
Michael? Thank you, Alex. Describe what you think the number one challenge facing public education is today, and if appointed, what approach would you take to address it?
As I stated before, that I feel the number one issue is the property-slash-school tax. We need to look at this as a group and see how we can come up with a solution. I cannot do this on my own, but I feel that we would reach out to state leaders that work up in Harrisburg and work with them and see if we can come up with a solution. I know Amy Beth and yourself has met with Senator Mastriano, and if I am elected, I would gladly be a part of that and try to come up with a solution.
Thank you. Kim?
Hi, Alex. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
What are your strengths, and how do you think that you could use those to contribute to the school board?
I feel my strength is I'm hardworking and diligent. And thirdly, I feel that coming from a career and technology background, that is something that is lacking in the school board, that as I stated before, that 50% of our students that graduate goes to a four-year college, but the other 50% do not. And do...okay, do they have...do they know what career path they want to go? I feel that if we can implement and keep on investing in career and technology, that they can learn the skills in the school system, that hopefully that they can get onto a job, that hopefully that company could invest in them and maybe send them to higher education in their respective fields, or get on as a good job with the skills that they've acquired through the career and technology programs.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Mr., do you have any closing statement that you'd like to address the board with?
I would like to thank each and every one of you for giving me the opportunity to come out and express the importance of career and technology, safety, and family values. As a Christian man, I was raised with family values, and I implement those qualities in my household. My son loves the Lord, we love going to church, he right now wants to go every Sunday. And I hope to inspire others to take a chance to hopefully get back to their community. I want to thank you, and you'll have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Broadway, and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you.
We're gonna allow you an opportunity at the beginning to give us a brief opening statement, and then we'll proceed into the questions, followed by any closing statements that you wish to address the board with.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, good evening, and thank you for taking the time to listen to all four candidates tonight. I'm gonna take a second to introduce myself. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Alice Broadway, and I had the pleasure this past year of serving on the board with a number of you, and as well as working, of course, with the excellent administration that we have in the Gettysburg schools. So, I figured I'd give a little bit of my background. Some of you have heard some of this before, but for those of you that I'm newer to. I've lived in the Gettysburg community now for the past 10 years or so, and that started back when I attended Gettysburg College as an undergraduate for an education degree. And when I went through that education program, I had the opportunity to go observe veteran teachers in the public schools and got a chance to step inside every single one of Gettysburg schools. It was a fantastic opportunity to be able to see all of those teachers delivering that instruction to our students and to see how engaged they were in that process. So after that experience of observing, I was able to look for that and saw that out in my own career. When I first started teaching, I was teaching up in Massachusetts at the Bedford Public Schools, which is an inner-city school district, where I had the opportunity to work with elementary, middle, and high school students. Upon leaving there, I sought out Gettysburg again, and I moved back to the area for that small community and for the connection between the community and the schools that was so strong while I was here. I did get a chance to work in the Gettysburg Montessori Charter School in town. Unfortunately, that was only for about a year, because then they cut the position back, and I had to look for a full-time position somewhere else. But in that moment, I had the opportunity then to really dive into getting to know some of the communities, families of the community, and the students of the community, to work with them on their music education. I got a job following that in the Mechanicsburg Area School District, where I've worked now for the past four years, and I've been able to teach elementary music as well as work with the high schoolers in the marching band program as well. So, a passion of mine throughout all of my experience in education and continues to be a passion of mine is of research and professional development, and I had the opportunity this past summer to finish my work towards my masters, and I got my masters in music education from Michigan State University. And throughout that process, I had the opportunity to read a bunch of recent literature in the field and read research about trends now in education. I have conducted my own research on teaching and learning in the classroom, and that is something that I feel like is an incredibly important part of being on a school board, is to stay informed about those things in one way or another. So I feel like that's a strength that I bring to this position. I also believe that that informs my practice every day in the classroom, and I think that's another strength that I have. Being a practicing teacher, it means that I'm in the classroom every day, and I get to see how these different trends and policies and programming decisions impact classrooms, impact students, and impact teachers. And I feel like that's something that's an important thing to bring to the board, so that we have a general idea of how those things might play out in our own schools here in Gettysburg. I also think that as an elementary teacher, of course, the foundation of education is just as important as the continuing education through high school, and that's a perspective that I can bring to the board. I do work with young elementary and middle elementary and older elementary, and I feel like that also, of course, is something that's important to our programming decisions as we move forward. From my experience on the school board, I believe the board's role is to provide the most enriching educational opportunities we can for students while also meeting the financial needs of the community. And I do feel like my experience as a practicing teacher and my experience on the board as a member of the community gives me a lot of strengths for being able to be a strong candidate for that. I definitely would look forward to the opportunity to continue helping supporting the district in that way while also keeping the interests of our students and planning for our students at the forefront of what we do. So, thank you for your time, and I look forward to all your questions.
Thank you. Do you feel public school tax dollars should be pledged to fund economic development? For clarification, it would be using taxpayer dollars for economic development?
I believe that when we're looking at the rules of taxpayer dollars going towards the schools, that the decisions we're making in this room are to support the programs that we need for the schools. So if you're talking about increasing taxes to help provide for something for the financial well-being or programming well-being of the school districts, then I do believe that that is something that is appropriate. Of course, like I mentioned, there's something that you need to keep in mind how you're doing that and what might be the needs of the community in that moment. So if it's a program that is deemed necessary for our growing population of students, then I feel like it's our job as a school board to pursue that and to advocate for it on behalf of those families.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Alice, thank you for your continued interest in the school board.
Sure.
What do you believe is the largest challenge facing our district, and why do you feel you are qualified to help us solve that challenge?
Sure. I think a lot about this question, being a practicing teacher, thinking about what is becoming an issue in education, and I would say that one that's pretty big across the board, including here, is stress and anxiety in students, and then continuing trauma for students and their families. And I know that our school district has spent time on that. Last year, they brought in psychologists to talk to families about that in the community, to talk to administration, and provide professional development about that. I would like to see that continue to be supported. I also feel like that's a programming responsibility as well. So when you're helping students learn about stress and anxiety, K-12, that having programs in place are really important to teach them about that as they grow. One of the reasons I feel like I am informed about that and a good candidate to help with that is because of my own experience in the schools. The professional development opportunities in Mechanicsburg are pretty high in that regard. Just last Friday, we had a neuroscientist skyped in for our professional development as a school district, and we got a chance to talk to and learn about the language surrounding neuroscience in the brain that we could then teach to students so that they learn about how their brain learns. And I thought that was an incredibly powerful experience. I think that, you know, continuing our work with growth mindset in the schools, elementary level on, is an important first step in continuing to educate the students and then bringing their parents on board with extra opportunities outside like we've done, continuing to bring those in to help.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kim?
In one-word adjective, describe yourself in 10 seconds.
I think I've said this before, my adjective would be passionate. Would you like an explanation?
One word. Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening, Alice.
Good evening.
If appointed, how would you handle a request if approached from an individual, and usually this happens to me at the grocery store, at church, in the community, by my neighbors, or a phone call, who may have an issue with the school, one of the programs, one of the personnel here at the school? What might you do? What action might you take?
Sure, thank you. So, this is a hypothetical in a sense, and then also not, that has happened to me, and has happened in email before as well. I'm always a large advocate of people knowing what's happening in our schools, and of course, being an active member of the community as well. So my first step is to invite them to come to a meeting, or invite them to check out what the school district has been doing, what the school board has been working on. I do believe that it's not my place as a single individual of a nine-person board, or soon-to-be nine-person board, to give promises to any individual that approaches me, or even tell them really my own opinion about it. I think that that comes out in the way that the school board works together, and that that dialogue is really important for people, but that ultimately, when we make a decision, we present a united front as well. There's a system of command that you go through, so when I've been approached in the past, I've invited them to come to the board to ask questions, I've invited them to read up on the reporting in the newspaper about our meetings, and I also invite people often to email specific administrators who have more information about that than I would on my own.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Amy Beth?
Thank you very much for coming out. Do you have a personal mission statement, and if so, what would that be?
Well, that's a good question. I have a personal teaching mission statement, which is really the way that I do education. It's on my website, and I can't say that I know exactly what it says, but I'll kind of quote some highlights from what I believe about my philosophy of education. I really think that one of the strengths in education is having it be a collaborative opportunity for all parties involved, and I think that can carry from students all the way up through families and communities and school boards. I think that in order to help students really learn about their place in the world and what they're passionate about in the world, that it's important to see models about that from community members, from adults in their community that might be related to them or not, that comes through teachers, that comes through school board representatives. I also believe that everybody has something that they're passionate about, and that's one of my favorite joys about teaching, is to help find that with students and help learn that about them, whether it comes in music or not. I'm excited for them if it's something else outside of that field as well. I do think that showing that collaboration and showing those opportunities to students is important, but that also that keeps everyone in mind so that we can build a kind of more informed community that can work together towards helping support them in that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael? Ms. Broadway, thanks for coming out tonight.
Sure.
So if you could describe what you think is the number one challenge facing public education is, and if appointed, what approach would you take to address it?
Yeah, a slightly different kind of challenge, I suppose. So for me, one of the biggest issues surrounding public education right now, it's not a new one to a lot of us, it would be linked to specifically cyber charters, but also just money that is spent in by charter school lobbies in general, going away from public schools and towards other alternative education that's not overseen by the state in the same way or overseen by the school districts themselves. I think there's a little bit of a niche here, and that would be African border charters. I did work at one of them. I think it's important, of course, they go through this rigorous process. VITA did last year. Montessori, I believe, is doing that now. So, in that sense, that partnership is really important for the different niches for our community, but it also is something that's overseen. And anybody that was around during the time of that forum for cyber charters knows that that's a big suck of money. It takes a lot of money away from public schools, and it's something that we don't...we can't help make sure that students are getting the same kind of education there. So what I would do, I mean, I think it's important to continue making that information known to the public. When parents have a choice to send their kids somewhere, we hope they send them here. We have a really great cyber program as well, and making sure that they know about those opportunities is important. I also think as we've kind of done throughout the past year, continuing to contact state and local reps about that is really important, too. I don't have an answer for it, I wish I did, but... I don't have an answer for it, I wish I did, but I'd like to keep fighting that good fight.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Tim?
Thanks for coming on, Ms. Broadway. So what are your strengths and how do you think that Darryl will help you with the school board?
Sure. I've mentioned a couple of things that I do that I feel like bring strengths to the board, some experience actively teaching. I also am a very opinionated person, but I communicate respectfully. And I think that's an important quality. I like to question people, I'm a critical thinker. So when it comes down to making a decision as a group, I do feel like I look at all of the parts involved and I want to know more about the things I don't know before making a decision. So making sure that I've thought through everything and making sure that I'm communicating with people when I do have questions helps to provide that clarity and a group consensus. Yeah, we'll leave it at that. If you have more questions, you can ask me.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So now we'd like to provide that opportunity that I spoke about where you can, if there's anything you'd like to do in closing, you would like the board to know, you're more than welcome.
Sure, I mean, I don't want to repeat myself too much, so I'll keep it brief. I think overall, the thing that led me to be a person that ran for the school board at the beginning of all of this and a person who continues to come back to run for the school board is just that I do care a lot about education for students and I do care a lot about making sure the community stays informed about education for students. I think there's a lot of discourse surrounding education these days that is not necessarily accurate. I think if you look further beyond our school districts, towards the state and federal levels, that there are some narratives out there about education that say that we're not really supporting students in the way we should be. And I feel like that is something that we need to keep in mind but I also feel like it's important to continue recognizing our strengths as a school district and to continue communicating those strengths to people in an informed way. I would love to be able to be a part of that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Broadway.
Thank you.
This time, I would like to open up the floor for nominations for the two-year vacant seat for the Gettysburg area school board.
Mr. President, may I please put a motion forward for Alex Hewitt to fill the two-year position?
I would, I think we are very fortunate to have four outstanding candidates and I'm very appreciative of that. I know of several schools in the community that would be very jealous to have the type of quality candidates that we have here this evening. In my opinion, for the best fit for what this board needs right now, I would like to nominate Sylvan Hershey.
And I would like to continue support of the candidate who received almost 3,000 votes in the recent election and nominate Alice Broadway.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Michelle Smires.
Well, there's no need for me to ask if there's any further nominations. With all candidates being nominated by at least one board member, it would move to a vote for the individual candidates. Am I correct, Mr. McQuade?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Alice Broadway.
Amy Beth?
Alex Hewitt.
Al. Sylvan Hershey. Timmin?
Michelle Smires.
Michael?
Alex Hewitt.
Tim?
I'm going to say Ms. Smires. Here's a tough one, I'm going to put myself last. I'm going to say Mr. Hershey. Therefore, I believe we have moved forward on a tie between Mr. Hershey, Mr. Hewitt, and Ms. Smires, is I am not correct? Jane? I'll go around to Tim.
Smires.
Michael?
Alex Hewitt.
Timmin?
Smires.
Al. Hershey. Amy Beth?
Hewitt.
Kathleen?
Sylvan Hershey.
I've got to stay with my original pick, Mr. Hershey. Where are we at on our votes?
Three, two, and two.
Three, two, and two is what I have. And to remind the board, a candidate will require five votes.
Making a total.
Four votes?
Five.
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 It's not the number of people, not the number of board members present, it's the number of board members who are seated. So it has to be a majority of eight, which would be five.
Back for another vote, Michael?
Alex Hewitt.
Timmin?
Smires.
Al. Hershey. Amy Beth?
Hewitt.
Kathleen?
Hershey.
Tim?
Smires.
Hershey. I'm not keeping track of the votes, are you?
Same thing.
I'll slow down.
Three, two, and two.
Want to be a suggestion?
The law provides for no procedure. The board policy provides no procedure. You can, as a board, have an ad hoc procedure. And one of the things that you did by following an ad hoc procedure is drop off the lowest vote getter in the first round. But you don't even have that option with your current votes because you have a tie at the bottom. So, unless somebody can come up with an ad hoc procedure that four of you agree to, that would break this, somebody has to change a vote. You just keep voting, as far as I know.
And the ad hoc procedure can't circumvent code, right?
Correct, well, yeah, the code doesn't provide anything. I mean, under Robert's Rules of Order, actually, when you run into a perpetual tie, you can pick lots, choose lots. But that would not, and you do have Robert's Rules of Order in your policy, but that would not meet the code requirement. There must be five affirmative votes for the person. That is clear. So at some point, there must be a vote taken by this board where five of you agree on one person. If you can't agree tonight, then the matter can be taken up at another time. But the only thing I know is to continue to vote.
I would agree with you, we can hold another vote. But I suspect that right now, based upon what people interpreted during the interview process, they've made their decision by their vote on three separate occasions now, what they personally viewed or heard. So I'm not sure, Mr. McQuade, we're, I mean, we're not happy to do another vote. But short of any type of, I would suggest, and I don't know if it's out of line yet, any discussion amongst the board members related to why they found a particular candidate to their choosing, may or may not move one or two of the board members in a direction to change their mind? I don't know. I mean, because I can't obviously without discussion know what each individual board member interpreted by the interview process.
And if the chair wants to entertain such discussion, that's your prerogative.
I mean, for the sake of going one more time, I'd call a roll call again, vote. And if not, then I would entertain if somebody wanted to make any type of discussion as a board member, not from the candidates, as to why they believe the selection of their candidate is most fitting for the vacant seat. But I think that would be in order, would we agree?
Did you say we can do one's? Pardon? Did you say we can do one's?
No, no, you can't.
Roll call. Timmin?
Smires.
Al. Hershey. Amy Beth?
Hewitt.
Kathleen?
Hershey.
Tim?
Smires.
Mike?
Hewitt.
Hershey. So I would entertain at this point, if anybody who is looking at a particular candidate would like to, I don't want to use the word persuade, but allow the board to see the thought process on why you're backing a particular candidate. And that's not in any way to diminish any other candidate's position or their qualifications. But obviously, as a board, we all watched the same interviews and came to different conclusions as to who would be the fit for the vacant seat.
I'm not bashful. So, this is a unique process in terms of interviewing and selecting a candidate. Typically, in the corporate world, you would conduct interviews, you would read someone's resume. You would be able to tailor specific questions based on strengths or weaknesses or information that you found interesting in their resume. And also, as an interview panel, you would have an opportunity to discuss with your peers on what you found particularly appealing or not appealing with that specific candidate. I understand that everyone that came up tonight, it takes a lot of courage to come up and sit in front of a board in a public setting, you know, with the press reporting. And I want to come in and thank everyone that came out and did that tonight. And I also want to say that credentials specifically for this role don't weigh a lot, in my opinion. I think that everyone's educational background, work background, professional background is impressive. And I think any school board in the county would be lucky to have any of you. But with that being said, the reason that I'm leaning toward Mr. Hewitt is because his passion for the tech ed program, that's something that the county has just approved as our district has a county-wide tech center. And not everyone is cut out to go to college or pursue the path of higher education. It's certainly a really great way to go, but that doesn't fit every student. I think our district in particular comes from more of an agricultural and rural background and there's a lot of need locally for trade and for expanding the trades. And that particular part of what Mr. Hewitt hit on is important to me and I think it would be a valuable asset to have set on this board. And that's why I have so chosen Mr. Hewitt.
Actually, I can't disagree with you, Mike, and I'm not bashful either. For me, it was very difficult. While I don't know Ms. Smires other than this evening, I actually nominated Ms. Broadway the last time around and had the opportunity and the honor to work with her and found her to be exactly what she portrayed this evening in terms of asking the tough questions and following through with her commitment. And then the toss-up came down, Mr. Hewitt. For me, Mr. Hewitt is really appealing to me because of the tech ed background and because of the sole reason why I ran and became school board member with an emphasis on those kids that, while we all know that we have a vast majority of the kids that are getting normally a quality education, but they have a quality family to back up their education and to ensure that they're going to be successful, we also have, I'm not neglecting that we have kids that aren't probably going to be college-bound. That's the reality of the world. And our focus in allowing that, those students, every opportunity that the college kids get is extremely huge to me. And then we, Mr. Hershey, my work with Mr. Hershey for a year on the board, sitting beside him, I found him to be also an individual that was willing to ask the tough questions. He is correct, I found him to be more of a listener. But him and I had many private conversations after board meetings into what we were looking for and how we wanted transparency. And we wanted the board to be a proactive board amongst ourselves in order to move the agenda of Gettysburg area school district further. So, that became a difficult decision and I knew that coming in this evening, that we were going to have four quality candidates and I was going to have a difficult decision. I can't tell you I wasn't hoping it didn't come down to my decision, which it didn't, but I stand here open to work with this board to find one of the candidates to reach five. I stand there, even though at this point, whether I support one candidate or not, I am willing to come to a consensus as a board because I believe that's our responsibility. We're not always going to get, and we've all talked about getting what we've wanted, how to react to disappointment or a no vote. I think tonight's an opportunity for us to show that we're going to work together and determine one candidate. And if that means either myself or somebody else moves a vote to consensus, then that's what I must, I personally believe that's what it takes.
But I'm also not very shy. We have four outstanding candidates. I agree with a lot of the things that Michael and Kenny have communicated. I believe in getting to know Sylvan during his tenure on the board. I believe his beliefs are very, very similar to Mr. Hewitt's when it comes to tech education and students. And a four-year undergraduate degree is not for everybody nor should it be. And I think Gettysburg school district with the administration that we have is really pushing hard in that direction to make sure that we're preparing everybody for their future endeavors and doing a good job of that. But the thing that separates it for me is that, and again, I would be happy with any one of our four candidates here tonight, and I think many schools would be. But Mr. Hershey brings so much more expertise in so many other areas that we, as a school board and a community, will be dealing with. And I just think using him as a resource and based upon what he's done in the past and his contributions, I think he would be, again, the best fit for what we need right now. But again, I would be happy with any one of the four. Thank you.
You know, and I'll say, I'll ditto some of that. I really appreciate all four of you coming out tonight and showing an interest in the school board. And though I did vote for Sylvan Hershey, before I tell you why, I'd like to start by telling you what I really liked about Michelle and Alex. So Michelle, I really appreciate, and you understand, we've got limited resources because we do. And I thank you for having an eye on that. How we appropriate, how we manage that is critical to student success and minimal pay for taxpayers. So thank you for that. And Alex, your caring, as you said, really shines through. I appreciate your passion for tech ed and the reality that not every student is on a cookie cutter path. And I genuinely thank you for that. So why my support for Sylvan Hershey? At the risk of saying what two people have already said, I will say I have worked with Sylvan for a year on the school board. Sylvan brings a wealth of knowledge to us. He's got an expansive view on what school boards can and cannot do. He really is a wonderful listener and he's a strategist. I appreciate that Sylvan is really cautious about how we allocate our taxpayer dollars while not sacrificing opportunities for students. And he's shown that time and time again, and that's why I gave him my support.
I, I'm sorry. I just, it was really close to me. Everybody has, everybody brings a different...
Everybody has, everybody brings a different skill set for their potential position here at the board and all of them have equal weight. It, it's just deciding which would be the best fit for the district. And it is, it's a very tough decision, not just for somebody that we have to work with, but who we think is going to be able to help the district as a whole for the next four years. And I, and I appreciate all of you coming out. You got, you all have a great perspective on the district and your ideals and what you could bring to the table. And I really appreciate you. It does make it hard.
For me, I'd like to challenge each of you. I chose Alex Hewitt for several different reasons. What I was able to hear was that he has already dedicated his volunteer time within our tech program, which we do need to focus on. He also put time and energy into seeing exactly where we are with our numbers and I did appreciate that very much. His honesty and ability to communicate that with the driven knowledge of his own child, I would prefer to serve with another parent, but I also want some diversity. We do have some educators. We do have some over, we have people who actually have overlapping abilities. I know we've got two business owners here, we've got a tech person, someone who serves, I don't know, Kenny.
It's okay.
Serves the community.
There you go.
And then we have Timmin. I would like to have diversity within our board and I believe that that's what Alex Hewitt brings to our board. And I would like to just give at least a little bit of energy into thinking two of us will need to bend and we're going to need to put forward a person that's working with each other. Now, myself personally, I know where I would like and what the goals that I have, and I think that some of the things that Mr. Hewitt said would complement the direction that, and the goals that I know I personally would like to see the district do.
Well, good evening. Short and sweet. Short and sweet. I think we all, we're, we're going to be, not who we get, we're going to do well with. I guess my take would be, Michelle, like Catherine said, identified the limited resources and we all know that's a challenge, no matter which one we get, that's a challenge for all of us. She's worked in the upper end of the school district and has some knowledge of how this works. She's not completely an outsider. She completed the course in statement of financial interest, which when you go to that class that the three of us, that they spend a place of time on that, so that's helpful. I guess for me, it came down to I asked for a one-word answer. Michelle's the only one who gave a one-word answer. So, that was it. And this may be a very minor point, but Michelle's the only graduate of Gettysburg High School. I'm aware of how the district works.
You are correct. It's going to take, Amy Beth is correct. It's going to take this evening, two people that are willing to bend. And I don't know where that's going to be a real difficulty, if we're all going to be honest and correct, because each of us said that all four candidates, we'd be lucky to have, and all four candidates are qualified to serve on this board. I mean, outside of me being totally honest, it came down to two different candidates for me with the respect of all four. And with the final two candidates, I certainly, sitting in the position I'm at, am willing to, I don't want to say concede, but I'm willing to bend in order to move the process because I believe that either any of those candidates that take the vacant seat beside Ms. Pratt here this evening are going to do the jobs that are best with ability and they'll be fine, they'll be perfectly fine. So, I'm going to call a vote again and we'll see where we go and then we'll determine what our next course of action is. Roll call. Kathleen.
Hershey.
Amy Beth.
Hewitt.
Al.
Hershey.
Timmin.
Smires.
Mike.
Hewitt.
Tim.
Hewitt.
I'm going to follow through because I'm a man of my word. I mean, all the candidates are good candidates and I think it's my responsibility to move this forward. Hewitt. May I have the votes, please?
Alex, four. Michelle, one.
Roll call. Tim.
Hewitt.
Michael.
Mr. Hewitt.
Timmin.
Al, Mr. Hewitt.
Al.
Hershey.
Amy Beth.
Hewitt.
Kathleen.
Hershey.
Hewitt.
Do we have five?
Yes.
I want to thank all the people that are four candidates that came in this evening. Obviously, you can see there was some, some stress up here because I firmly believe that all the candidates were worthy here. I appreciate openly the board's willingness to follow through with what our comments were, that we had four great candidates that we're here to select from and it was our responsibility to follow through and move this board to number nine. With that being said, Tam, would, yeah, I'm going to turn it over to you. Ms. Hewitt, come forward, please.
It's a question. That was the vote. Is there a appointment vote? You want us to vote?
Make a motion and should you would be the...
There's a question.
Are you asking, is there another vote necessary?
Right. I'm asking, is that, is that the appointment vote?
Yeah, I, I, that's, that would be my...
That is a great vote. Mr. Hewitt?
I state your name. I, Alex Hewitt, do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth. And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Thank you.
The board's going to... The board will take a two-minute break. Mr. Hewitt, so that Mr. Hewitt can find his seat.
And Tam.
Have some procedural stuff explained.